Okay, let's call this July 9th reorganizational meeting of the Somers Board of Education to order. Everybody will rise for the pledge.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States. America. Under God, in the fiscal, delivering and justice.
We're gonna do a roll call. Being that we're all just, I can't really see everybody that clearly if everybody just like, you know, speaks up a little bit. Ife Cheng?
Yes, here.
Okay, perfect. Margaret De Lorenzo?
Here.
Dominic Di Martino?
Here.
Amanda Candell?
Here.
Daryl Mundis?
Here.
Chadwick Olson?
Here.
Patrick Verbarro?
Here.
Okay, great, everybody is here. So now we're gonna administer the oath of office to Daryl and Margaret. You know what, we can do this together if both of you just get up and both raise your right hand. And speak after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Daryl Mundis.
Aye, Margaret De Lorenzo.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
the Constitution of the State of New York.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge.
and that I will faithfully discharge.
and that I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of trustee of the Board of Education.
the duties of trustee of the Board of Education.
the duties of trustee of the Board of Education.
of Somers Central School District of the town of Somers, New York.
of the Somers Central School District, the town of Somers, New York.
of the Somers Central School District of the town of Somers, New York.
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Great, thank you. Okay. Now we're gonna appoint a temporary chairperson. Can I have a motion for Dr. Blanch, Superintendent of Schools, to be appointed temporary chairperson of this reorganizational special meeting?
so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Dr. Blanch will now preside until a president is nominated and appointed.
Thanks Nancy. So my piece here is to go ahead and ask for a motion first to adopt the agenda.
Yeah, motion to adopt the agenda. Ms. Prin.
so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then my next piece is to go ahead and call for any nominations, election of the president of the board. Any motions?
Yeah, I'll nominate Amanda Candell.
Second.
I'll nominate Ife.
Okay, wait, hold on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I nominated Amanda.
So Chad, you nominated Amanda?
Yeah.
Okay. And who seconded?
I did.
Daryl? Okay. Okay. Any other nominations?
Ife.
Okay. Who nominated that, sorry?
Dom.
Dom.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, can we, let's vote on the nomination for Amanda Candell. Let's do a roll call. Ife?
Could I request each to make a brief statement, please?
Sure. Okay, Amanda, do you want to?
Want me to go first?
Yep.
Okay, so this is my third year as trustee on the Board of Education. I spent last year as vice president where I took on the role of helping to onboard new members as well as helping to plan the board retreats and assisting in superintendent evaluation. I take advantage of as many learning and networking opportunities I can through both NISBA and West Putt School Board Association, including board officers training. I want to encourage all board members to take advantage of these professional development opportunities this year. I know this school district very well, including the programs and curriculum K through 12, and try my best to work collaboratively with the administration without micromanaging. I can say that in my two full years on the board, I've never missed a single board meeting, a single agenda meeting, a single committee meeting, or a single board site visit to a school. This is a commitment I've made to our community and our school district in keeping with our mission that all students in Somers are celebrated, engaged, and have access to high-quality education. This year, we have added, we have the added work of finding a new superintendent, and while all of us need to work towards this common goal of finding the best person for the job, I've already contacted search firms and have been working with legal counsel to organize our Part I of our board retreat so we can hit the ground running this summer in our search. And I believe my organizational skills, my deep understanding of the school system, and my positive relationships with administrators are qualities that will enable me to lead effectively, foster collaboration, and help all of us make informed decisions that positively impact the educational experience of students and the overall success of our schools.
Okay, Ife? Did you want to make a statement?
Yes, I'd like to first welcome Margaret and Daryl to the board. Sorry, I couldn't be there to greet you. Here's my campaign speech. I think we have a young board. Most members were either new or less than a term, and I want to offer my 17 years of experience to serve the Somers School District. I had four kids graduate through K through 12 in Somers. My heart and soul is with Somers Schools. My second reason, which actually I felt very sad, when I was blamed for Dr. Blanch's leaving Somers Central School District. I really, really feel sorry and very sad that I was blamed for that. I would like to clear that up. Ray's leaving was linked to the vote to extend his tenure to five years before his term is up in two years.
I'm gonna ask if we don't speak regarding personnel matters, including myself, please, board?
Yes, I will come to that, okay?
No, Ife, I'm asking you not to speak regarding personal matters as I'm right now overseeing this piece, to not speak regarding personal matters, and that would include myself directly. So please cease and desist.
I just wanna tell people that.
That's not an option, Ife, that's what I'm saying.
I'm going to my way based on the fact I want to protect board's integrity. Nothing personal, nothing against anyone. I just want to clear that up, okay? All right? If that's okay with you guys, that's my, you know, second point, I feel that I am blamed for no reason. Now, the school, in my opinion, is a family, not a government agency, okay? We should not run the school like a government agency with a cabinet or whatever, a structure, rather really as a family. And every board member also should be treated equally. And I want to make sure that happens. If I become the president, I wanna make sure every board member is equally accessed to all information and communication, and everybody can contribute with their ideas towards improving the Somers School District. And I have served 17 years on the board. I've been active in many, many areas, not only supporting budgets year after year. I've been through Albany lobbying issues, and I also served on the Teachers Center, which is the Northern Westchester and abundant Teacher Center for 15 years. I have really deep knowledge about what teachers are facing up to and what they'd like to have as a support and so on. And I really would like to see that Somers School District is a very united school district, not as a divided division with some issues. So that's my main purpose. I plead you to vote for me to be the president, to be a working hard president, to heal whatever division issues we had and make our schools the best. Thank you.
I think we'll go ahead and Nancy, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So now we're gonna vote on the first nomination for Amanda Candell. Ife, how do you vote?
Nay.
Okay. Margaret, how do you vote?
Amanda Candell.
Dominic, how do you vote?
Ife.
Okay, but we're voting for Amanda.
Oh, nay.
Okay. Amanda, how do you vote?
Yay.
Daryl, how do you vote?
Yay.
Chadwick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Nay.
Okay. So it's four to three, and resolution passes with Amanda Candell being nominated as president. So now we're gonna do the oath for Amanda.
Do you stand up?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. Aye, Amanda Candell, solemnly swear.
Aye, Amanda Candell, solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Board of Education.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the president of the Board of Education.
of the Somers Central School District.
of the Somers Central School District.
of the town of Somers, New York.
of the town of Somers, New York.
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Do we have nominations for vice president?
Ife?
I'm sorry, who said that?
Dom.
Okay, thank you.
I nominate.
We need a second?
I'm sorry, is there a second?
We need a second nomination, a second motion for Ife.
Okay. I nominate Chad Olson.
Second.
Any others? Okay, should we do a roll call? Let's do a roll call for Ife. Ife's nomination for vice president. Ife, how do you vote?
Is this starting voting already?
Yes, we're, yes, for you.
What is the vote for?
It's for you. You were nominated for vice president.
Yes.
Okay. Margaret, how do you vote?
Nay.
Dominic, how do you vote?
Yay.
Amanda, how do you vote?
Nay.
Daryl?
Nay.
Chad?
Nay.
Pat?
Yay.
Okay. Okay. Let's do Chad's nomination. Ife, how do you vote? Ife?
Chad? Nay.
Okay. Margaret?
Yay.
Dominic?
Nay.
Amanda?
Yay.
Daryl?
Yay.
Chad?
Yay.
Pat?
Nay.
Okay, so the resolution passes with Chad being nominated as vice president. So we'll do a roll, an oath for Chad. I, Chadwick Olson.
Hi, Chadwick Olson.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge.
and that I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of vice president of the Board of Education.
duties of the vice president of the Board of Education.
of the Somers Central School District.
of the Somers Central School District.
of the town of Somers, New York.
of the town of Somers, New York.
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Are we ready to continue, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Appointment of district officers and other appointments, do I have to read all of them or just say?
No, you can just say as listed.
Okay. Resolved that the following appointments are setting of stipend rates to be approved for the 24-25 district officers as stated.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm sorry, Ife, I can't hear you.
Well, what exactly was voting for? I cannot hear.
Are you following the agenda? You can find it on board docs.
I don't have access right now.
It's appointment of district officers and other appointments. Resolved for setting the following appointments and setting stipend rates for approved for the 24-25 district officers as listed.
Okay.
Signatures on all statistical reports. Resolved that the signatures on all statistical reports be those of the president of the board and district treasurer.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Certification of payrolls. Resolved that the signature of the superintendent of schools be approved for the certification of payrolls for the 24-25 school year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Petty cash accounts. Resolved that the following petty cash accounts be maintained for the 24-25 school year. Primrose School, $100. Custodian Kathleen Winter. Intermediate School, $100. Custodian Linda Belger. Middle School, $100. Custodian Jennifer Mangoni. High School, $100. Custodian Pete Rodriguez. Special Services, $100. Custodian Stacy Elconan. Cafeteria, $100. Custodian Ms. Jill Wiseman. Buildings and Grounds, $100. Custodian Christopher McCartney. Superintendent interim, $100. Custodian Mr. Harry Lefever.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mileage reimbursement. Resolved that the district be authorized to reimburse staff members who are required to use their personal vehicles at the mileage rates established by the Internal Revenue Service for business expense deduction unless the terms of agreement specify otherwise. Furthermore, such travel must be given prior approval or authorization by the employee's supervisor and submitted for reimbursement on appropriately completed claim forms.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Cell phone assignments. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby approves the issuance of cell phones for the purpose of conducting district business to the persons and the job titles as listed. Family liaison.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Bank investment firms. Resolved that the following banks and investment firms be designated as depositories for the districts for the 24-25 school year. JP Morgan Chase Bank, Webster Bank, and Class MBIA. And be it further resolved that the authorized signatures on all checks shall be that of the district treasurer, or in the absence of the treasurer, it shall be the deputy treasurer, or in the absence of both the district treasurer and the deputy treasurer, it shall be the president of the Board of Education, and that the copies of this resolution in any depository's pro forma resolution shall be signed by the district clerk and the president and shall be transmitted in proper form to said depositories.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Bank accounts. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby ratifies the establishment of the bank accounts for the 24-25 fiscal year for such amounts authorized by law, and be it further resolved that the monies from said accounts are to be dispersed only upon the signature of the school district treasurer and in her absence the deputy school district treasurer, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Chase checking accounts, general fund, school lunch fund, capital fund, trust and agency funds, student activities fund, payroll funds, special aid fund, and scholarship account. Chase money market accounts as listed and Class MBIA as listed.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Designation of newspapers. Resolved that the Journal News and the Somers Record be designated as the official district newspapers for the 24-25 school year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Bid notices. Resolved that the school purchasing agent or his designee be authorized to submit bid notices and to open bids for the district for the 24-25 school year.
So moved. Second.
Who is the purchasing agent? Is that?
It's me.
That's you, right? I've sworn my trust.
He wants to know who's opening the envelope? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Committee on Special Education, Preschool Education. Resolved that the following be appointed members of the Committee on Special Education for the 25, 4-25 school year. Chairpersons Stacy Elconan, Megan Feby, Kim Morrissey. Alternate chairpersons will be the Somers Central School District administrators as listed, Somers Central School District psychologists, teacher representatives, all Somers Central School District Special Education faculty and related service providers, parent members, Martha Androw, and physician Dr. Elliot Barsh.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Appointments to Committee on Preschool Special Education. Resolved that the following be appointed members of the Committee on Preschool Special Education for the 24-25 school year. Chairpersons Stacy Elconan, Megan Feby, Kim Morrissey, and Ellen Most. Alternate chairpersons, Somers Central School District school administrators, including principals, assistant principals, Somers Central School District psychologists, teachers, representatives, all Somers Central School District Special Education faculty assigned, certified elementary faculty, and related service providers. Parent members are to be determined, and physician is Dr. Elliot Barsh.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? I have a hard copy if it's easier to, I don't know. Resolved that all policies and procedures in effect for the 23-24 school year, including the code of conduct, remain in full force in effect for the 24-25 school year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Defense and indemnification provisions. Whereas Section 18 of the Public Officers Law of the State of New York authorizes municipal corporations, including boards of education, to provide defense and indemnification to those associated with the school districts, including, but not limited to, officers, employees, and agents, and board authorized volunteers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby adopts the defense and indemnification provisions contained in Section 18 of the Public Officers Law, and hereby affords such protections to the district's board members, officers, agents, board authorized volunteers, and employees as defined there. This coverage shall be in addition to the coverage made available to such individuals under other enactments, including but not limited to, the education law of the State of New York.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Dignity Act coordinators. Resolved that the following be appointed as Dignity Act coordinators for the 24-25 school year as required by the Dignity for All Students Act. District to be determined, Primrose, Margaret Benedetto, SIS, Dina Miller, SMS, Kristin Muchacharo, SHS, Tara Kearns.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Resolved that the Board of Education workshop meeting schedule for the 24-25 school year be approved as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
And then I just wanted to jump in.
Oh, yeah.
If, for any reason, we have to change any of these, we do it by a vote and finding...
Correct. We can reset it, and then we'll figure out the times for the August meetings because they probably won't be at 7:00 PM. If everyone's good with that, we'll coordinate that. And some of that has wiggle room because of, we're gonna also work in a second retreat piece, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Student activity accounts. Resolved that the student activity accounts in effect for the 24-25 school year are as follows. The high school, class of 2025, class of 26, class of 27, class of 28. Academic Challenge, Art Honor Society, Culture Club, Drama Club, Fashion and Textile Arts Club, French Honor Society, Gender Sexuality Alliance Club, Green Power Club, Italian Honor Society, Musical Company, National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Student Council, Triumph Music Honor Society, Yearbook, Middle Schools, Drama Club, International Club, Student Council, and Yearbook.
So moved. Second.
Just one quick question, Chris, usually these are all the clubs that actually are established, so that's why they have the account, correct?
Yeah, these particular clubs have, they all have to have a president, vice president, treasurer, it's run, and they do more fundraising than some of these other, other clubs that we also have, they're just not designated as extracurricular.
So this is not an exhaustive list of all the clubs?
No, there's more clubs. These are just designated as student activity clubs that have a different set of standards that they have to follow.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Impartial hearing officers. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby adopts the list of impartial hearing officers as listed on the New York State Education Department Impartial Hearing Reporting System website.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Appointment of Section 3214 hearing officers for 24-25 school year. Resolved that Ronald Longo Esquire and Ken Bernstein Esquire be appointed as hearing officers to conduct superintendent's hearings in accordance with Section 3214 of education law at a rate of $195 per hour for services rendered with a minimum of four hours billed for each hearing date.
So moved. Second.
Quick question. Did that go up from last year?
No, it did not.
No, it's flat.
Still looks flat right from our share.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Abstentions, opposition? Authorization for conditional appointments. Resolved that for the 24-25 school year, the interim superintendent of schools be granted the authority to make appointments in the absence of a Board of Education appointment, and that such temporary appointment shall be formally placed for action by the Board of Ed at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
So moved. Second.
Could you repeat the last sentence?
Yes. So resolved, I'll just do the whole thing because it's one sentence. Resolved that the 24-25 school year, the interim superintendent of schools be granted the authority to make appointments in the absence of a Board of Education appointment, and that such temporary appointment shall be formally placed for action by the Board of Ed at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we already have a motion and a second, so we have to vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Authorization for superintendent to approve contracts up to $35,000. Resolved that the 24-25 school year, the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby authorizes the interim superintendent of schools to approve and execute on behalf of the school district any contracts for the purchase of goods or services that has a value up to $35,000.
So moved. Second.
Is that still same? Last year, did that go up as well?
Chris, is that the same as last year?
No, that did increase. So last year was 25,000. We were looking to move it to 35,000. That's just consistent with the bid threshold as well. So if there was any kind of contracts that were larger than that, we'd have to bring it to the board anyway, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So now we are going to appoint committees. So do we have, the first up is the audit committee? Is there anyone in particular who would like to be on the audit committee? Last year it was, what, Nick and Chad, I think, right?
I can do it again, that's fine.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll jump on it.
You'll jump? Okay. All right. So resolved that the Board of Education hereby continues or reconstitutes the audit committee as required by Chapter 263 of the laws of 2005, also known as the Comptroller's Five Point Plan, as an advisory audit committee, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education designates Board of Education members Chadwick Olson and Dominic Di Martino to serve on said committee for the 24-25 school year, in addition to a community member who will be identified at a later date.
So moved.
Okay.
Do we vote on these?
We vote on these, right, Nancy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Citizens Finance Committee. I would like to stay on Citizens Finance. Anyone else? I believe it was.
I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, I'm gonna move into something else.
I'd be interested in that.
Daryl? Okay. Anyone else? All right. Doesn't have to be three. It just can't be more. So resolved that the Board of Education designates the following Board of Education members, Amanda Candell and Daryl Mundis, to serve on the Citizens Finance Committee for the 24-25 school year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, was Dom on it also?
He's gonna move on.
Yeah, I'm gonna go into something else.
Oh, something else. I would do, I would.
You would like to, okay? And we'll add Chad Olson as well to serve on the Citizens Finance Committee for the 24-25 school year. Keep a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy Committee. Resolved that the Board of Education hereby designates, who would like to be on? like to be on policy?
I'll do policy.
I'd like to stay on it.
So, Pat, Dom would like to do policy. Ife, I believe you said you wanted to stay on policy?
Yes.
Okay. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby designates board members, Pat Barbero, Dom DiMartino, and Ife Chang, to the Policy Committee for the 24-25 school year to carry out the functions that set forth in the Policy Committee Charter.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications Committee. I know. I would like to stay on communications. Last year it was, what, you, me? I forget who was the third.
Yeah, I'm okay moving on to something.
Amanda, I would like to join the Communication Committee.
Okay. So, Ife, me, anyone else? You'll do? Daryl? Okay. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby designates board members, Amanda Candell, Ife Chang, and Daryl Mundis, to the Communications Committee for the 24-25 school year to carry out the functions that set forth in a Communications Committee Charter.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby, oh, sorry, Planning Committee. So now we're up to the Planning Committee. I think Ife, you said you'd like to stay on planning?
Yes, please.
Pat, you said also, right?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay. So, resolve that the Board of Education hereby designates board members, Ife Chang, Pat Barbero, and Margaret DiLorenzo, to the Planning Committee for the 24-25 school year to carry out the functions that set forth in the Planning Committee Charter.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For the Districtwide Safety Committee, does it have to be just one person, or is it just a matter of, that's, there's only one slot, Nancy?
It could be two.
Okay.
We had two last year.
Did you? Okay, because I know, Pat, you want to stay. Would you like to stay on it too, Chad, or move on?
I'd like to join if.
You'd like to join? Okay. It could be up to three.
Unless Chad wants to stay on it, I'm open. You want to stay?
No, no, no. Go on, go on, that's fine.
I'm sorry, we don't really need, two is really max.
Okay. So we'll keep it at two. Resolve that the Board of Education designates Board of Education members, Patrick Barbero and Dominic DiMartino, to serve on the Districtwide Safety Committee for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Westchester-Putnam School Board Association Liaison. This was something that Heidi used to do. I would like to stay, I would like to, I kind of would go to a lot of these. I would like to stay doing it. If anyone would like to join me in helping, that's fine. Everyone's always welcome to all the meetings, but I'm fine with being the point of contact, if that's good. Resolve that the Board of Education designated Board of Education member Amanda Candell to serve as Westchester-Putnam School Board Association Liaison and advocacy liaison to the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association for the 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. All right. This brings us to our public hearing for the Districtwide Safety Plan. A public hearing in 30-day comment period is required when revisions are made to the Districtwide Safety Plan. The plan will be available for public comment on the district's website. Comments may be directed to Mr. Dan Carrato, Districtwide Safety Coordinator, via email at dcarrotto@somerschools.org. The Board will be asked to adopt this plan at its August meeting, and the changes made are listed in the public Board Doc Agenda, so if anyone wants to take a look, there's several. I just have to announce the public hearing, right?
Yes, and if there's anybody that wants to make a comment, they can.
Okay.
So these are posted, it says here, right, and these are all posted on the website?
Yes.
Of what the changes are from prior?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Central Office Report, we don't have anything, right? Approval of meeting minutes. Resolve that the Board of Education, having received copies and minutes of the meetings of June 11th and June 25th, hereby approve same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Personnel Consent Agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions or comments? No, right? Okay. So, approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? CSE, CPSC. Resolve that the Board of Education, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo, hereby approve same. The costs of these services are contained, budgeted in the 24-25 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposition? Business Consent Agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Before we vote, I don't know, Chris, if you wanted to mention what's going on here for?
Edgitech.
Edgitech?
Yeah, so this, we talked during the budget process about moving Edgitech over to BOSI's, and then maybe a month or so ago, there was some developments that unfortunately their services wouldn't be aidable through BOSI's. So then we worked with Edgitech, knowing that we wouldn't be able to go through BOSI's anymore, so we worked with them to come to an agreement on a, on a cost for next year. So this is that one-year agreement, and they're still working with, with the different BOSI's to try to have their services aidable like we planned. But if, if that happens at some point during the year, we'll be able to move our, move the services that we, we'll be able to end our contract and move our services over to BOSI's, and then be able to get that aid the following year. If that does not happen during the year, then we'll have to look to put out a request for proposal for the 25-26 school year.
Okay.
Just as a note, this is for all school districts across the area, so it's not just us.
Yeah.
987.5 is for this school year.
This is for this school year.
You will not receive any BOSI's aid the following year, or approximately $400,000, though. That's a concern.
I'm sorry.
You will not receive $400,000 of aid the following year. It's always a reserve, but that's not just us, it's every school district that's facing this challenge right now.
And that was roughly what we were going to pay Edgitech anyway?
Amanda?
Yes.
We got it down from about 1.25, I think.
On this point, I'd like to suggest to Chris to consider introducing one agenda on our meetings, right, probably in the beginning of the budget cycle, to have BOSI's, the tech group, to make a presentation, sort of a review, and outlook type of presentation about the services and things we need, and the things that didn't done, or any problems, you know, we have, so on.
You want to, you want to have Edgitech provide an update? Sure.
Yeah, you provide one agenda on our meeting for them to come to present.
Yep, we can provide an update, a technology update at some point during the year.
Right, right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, before, we were using Edgitech before we tried to ship them over to the BOSI's aidable piece, anyway.
We've had them for the past three years.
It's never been aidable. This was supposed to be the first year, is that correct?
Yep. So, and, and we actually did move one of their positions over during the 23-24 school year, and there was no issues, and then this came down from the state very late in the game, so, and like Dr. Blanch said, it wasn't just us, it was every district, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Districtwide Safety Team. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District hereby authorizes the continuance of a district-wide safety, district-wide school safety team for the 24-25 school year pursuant to New York State Education Law, Section 2801, a subdivision for Project SAVE, Safe Schools Against Violence in Education, and 8-CRR, New York 155.17, and be it further resolved that the following are hereby appointed as members of the district-wide school safety team for the 24-25 school year. Harry LaFever, Chris Platania, Board of Ed members as selected, Dan Carrato, Dean Schuler, Kathleen Christiano, Chris McCartney, Elizabeth Turner, Phil Kavanaugh, Stacy Elconan, Gerard Esposito, Joseph Mara, and Kim Blau.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Policy Second Read. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby accept the following policy for a second reading. 2170, Board Member Conflict of Interest.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Was there any comment from the Policy Committee? Did everything get resolved? Was this the one that you had asked questions about?
Yeah.
Chad?
I don't know if they're.
Yeah, that was fairly straightforward. Again, it's, it's basically just including not just board members, but employees as well, so straightforward, yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right. Now it's time for our public comment on, if any, for this board meeting? Anyone? Okay. And then we have final comments from the board.
Well, I'll, I'll start my comment, okay? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, first I want to congratulate Amanda and, and Chad for being elected, and I would like to ask you to sort of pay attention to what I said and might convey, and I think there are certain things I'd really like to see that you guys do the right thing. And also, now I would like to say to Dr. Blanch, you know, best of luck to your new responsibilities. Thank you.
Welcome to Daryl and Margaret, and a congratulations to Amanda and Chad. I know you guys do a good job.
Same thing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's summer, so, congratulations to Amanda and Chad. Good luck this year, and, you know, looking forward to working together with everybody.
You don't have to say anything either. I'm really excited to work with everyone. I think we're going to have fun.
I'd just like to say, I'm also looking forward to the, to the, to the upcoming work that we've got in front of us. Congratulations to Amanda and Chad. Dr. Blanch will wish you all the best. Would have enjoyed working with you, but that's just not in the works. And I look forward to bringing my experience to the board and helping out in any way I possibly can.
Yeah, welcome, Margaret. Welcome, Daryl. Thank you for taking this on, giving your time. Thank you, Amanda, for stepping up to the president role. It's, I know it's a lot of work and big-time commitment, but I appreciate your organization that is going to help move us along. We have a great district, so to any of you prospective superintendents out there, we have a lot to offer here. It's really a fantastic place, full of great people, great possibilities, great learning, great teaching. So we look forward to meeting you, and it's big shoes to fill, Dr. Blanch. Very big. It's going to be tough, so I expect a lot of whoever's going to be coming next. I'm going to miss you, but thank you for your leadership, for, for your honesty. I've always learned a lot just being around here. It's one of the ways we learn in life, straining ourselves with good people. So I look forward to the coming year. We have a lot ahead of us as a board, for all of us to work together and work to continue the great district that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to say welcome to Margaret and Daryl as well. I look forward to working with you guys as well as everyone else this coming year. I appreciate everyone's faith in me to, to, to take on the role of president this year, and, and congratulations to Chad as well. I think we'll make a good team. And just so you guys know, the packets that were at your tables today, I had Nancy photocopy all of the proposals for superintendent search firms that we'll be discussing next week, so that we can get started on the process. It looks like the date is the 17th that I think everyone can make it on, so we'll look for your email for further details on that, as far as timing and such. And yeah, I look forward to the coming year, but I will certainly miss working with Ray and having you next to me, so you'll be missed.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and just take us out. So, a couple, just two things really. The project at the high school, the tennis courts are pretty well on their way. We do anticipate, we've got a little bit of delay from some delays that came on the DEP, and so more than likely, we're, should be ready by the middle of September. Our construction team is trying to accelerate this much as possible, but some things are just out of their control. So obviously with the spring sports, those two fields will be certainly ready by that time at no point, no problem at all. The other piece, I was just thinking, I was with one of my grandchildren this weekend, and we were watching some sailboats and things. One sailboat was doing pretty well. They were pulling in the sheets and did some nice, coming about a few times, another, another boat not, not so well. And you say, so Papa, what's going on? I said, you see that boat, young man? That boat's got a team on it. That team connects, they're there, they know where to get everybody there. That's our faculty, that's our staff, that's the administration. I said, son, look at that other team. That's not a team. That's a group of people. So he got it. Team administrators, faculty, staff, you're going to do well. Board, I